Andrew is ready. Terrific. All right. If we can reconvene our meeting to open sessions, the board was in executive session from 6:00 to 6:30 to discuss two confidential litigation matters and a personnel matter. And then we had our 2024 tenured faculty reception from 6:30 to 7:00. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Introductions.
Dave first.
Robert Teigen.
Catherine Addox.
Willow Bear.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dallenbaum.
Mary Smiatt.
And John Walston and you and McNay are unable to be here this evening. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the May 22nd, 2024 regular board meeting. So any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Three meeting reports, and first is our superintendent's report.
Yep. Thank you. Since our last meeting, registration for UPK did close and the lottery was conducted. There were just over 100 families who registered, I think it was 103 finally, for the 36 slots. All families were notified already, and those who were selected in the lottery have until June 14th to let us know if they wish to accept the slot they have or not. If all 36 families don't wish to participate for whatever reason, we then will go to those who are on the waiting list in the order they were selected. So, and individuals who were not selected have the number they were selected in the lottery. Also, I understand there were some, have been some questions about special education programs or aides. So, for the next meeting, if there are any specific questions board members have, if you could please email them to me, and then I'm happy to address them next, at our next meeting during the superintendent's report. So, just send them along to me.
Thank you.
And then finally, our room is full with celebration tonight with all of our tenure candidates. I'd like to congratulate all of our teachers who are receiving tenure this evening. They've been through several years of, I would say, intense evaluation process. Hopefully not too tense, they're all still here, so that's good. They've demonstrated certainly a high level of skill as teachers, and it's a pleasure to award them tenure this evening with their families and colleagues present. We look forward to having them as part of our B C team for many years to come. So, congratulations to all of you. So, we are going to award the certificates now. So, Dave, you want to start? And then, there is going to be a photo, there'll be photo ops for everyone, and then there's going to be a group photo at the end, so.
So, receiving tenure in the area of counseling, Tyler Anderson.
You want to do both at each time?
Yes. We'll do both at each time.
Receiving tenure in the area of elementary education, Megan Bornhorst. Receiving tenure in the area of CSE chair, Laura Bronson. Receiving tenure in the area of speech-language pathology, Gina Buswell. Receiving tenure in elementary education, Katia Casella. Receiving tenure in the area of music, oh, in the area of high school social studies, And receiving tenure in the area of music, Lily Rose David. Receiving tenure in the area of Assistant Director of Special Education, Sarah Flannery. Receiving tenure in the area of science, Sarah Genovese. Receiving tenure in the area of elementary education, Kristen Hughes. Receiving tenure in the area of elementary education, Sarah Jabor. Receiving tenure in the area of elementary education, Tom Kearney. Receiving tenure in the area of art, Gwen Kavatik. Receiving tenure in the area of social studies, Sienna Laduke. Receiving tenure in the area of elementary education, Carrie Lubarski. Receiving tenure in the area of reading, Melita Mitchell. Receiving tenure in the area of social studies, Mayora Patel. Receiving tenure in the area of teacher of the blind and partially sighted, Amy Pierce. Receiving tenure in the area of elementary education, Mike Rankin. Receiving tenure in the area of school psychologist, Julian Santos. And receiving tenure in the area of school social worker, Ariel White.
Just congratulations to everybody. We're so excited to have you here and look forward to everything you bring to the district. Congratulations. Good day.
You're welcome to come back.
Yeah.
I realized, I forgot to ask if we have any pig students visiting us tonight, kind of getting it in just under the wire. Yeah? So, you need to stay until the meeting is over or 9:00, whichever one comes first. When the meeting is done, make sure you sign out. There are sign-out sheets up here. If you don't sign out, you're not going to get credit for being here, so make sure you Next on the agenda is our board report. First, I just wanted to congratulate all of the students and staff that were involved in the VJ Cat production of Romeo and Juliet this past weekend. They did a terrific job, right here, in fact, in this room. But yeah, they always amaze me what a great job they do putting a Shakespearean play together. I also wanted to congratulate all of our retirees again. I attended the retirement reception earlier this week. And also, all of our high school juniors that were elected into the National Honor Society. The ceremony for that was also this past week. And just a reminder to anybody who is interested in attending, the Spectrum concert is tomorrow evening, starting at 7:00. And that is always, that's always a great concert.
Seven or 7:30?
I think it's 7:30.
Is it 7:30?
I have 7:30 on my schedule.
Okay, I better fix that then, for myself. Otherwise, I'm going to be sitting in the gym for half an hour alone. Let's see. Since our last meeting, we did have a policy committee meeting. We went through a number of policies that will be on the next agenda for a first read, including a number of them that had to do with some student privacy issues that, based on some changes in the law about recognizing certain things as PII, in particular, like phone numbers, that kind of thing. So, there's a few, like, small things like that. And then we also did look at the, made sure we looked at the annual policies that we have to approve each year, such as purchasing and conduct, all of those. I know there was also an audit meeting, which I know you can't share specifics, but I assume went well.
Yeah, we, it was fine. It was sort of the organizational meeting for the year. We met with our internal claims auditor. There had been some board concern about a perceived lack of detail on some of what we're asked to approve, so there was another discussion about what's a reasonable amount of information to expect in the job of the claims auditor. We met with the internal and external auditor and sort of level set on what their responsibilities were and what the process was for the two new audit committee members. Talked about that that would be my last audit committee meeting. I've been on the audit committee for six years, and now I will need to turn it over to someone else. We did see a preliminary draft of the internal audit, which was on data security. Overall, it was really pretty good, so the district will put together its corrective action plan, which will be part of the report that you all will approve later this year.
Thanks, Willa. And then...
I'd like to nominate you in for the, unless I hear any opposition, because I think they should care.
And then I know, there was also a lab school meeting this week as well. Catherine, if you can report out on that, that'd be great.
Absolutely. We had a really good conversation. Building off the first meeting, one of the things that we wanted to do is to continue to gather information to help guide the committee's considerations and other considerations that would happen around curriculum development. And so, we reviewed a survey, and that will go out soon. I don't, yes.
Next week. Next week. Not all high school students, it'll go out.
Oh, sorry, yes, thank you. A survey of high school students about how they heard about lab school, both of current lab school students as well as students in the traditional high school. So, getting more information on what folks know about lab school, what they think of lab school, and again, the experience of both kids in and not in the program. So, hopefully we'll get some good feedback on that, that'll help us to guide future discussions.
Great. Thank you. And then the only other thing that I had that I wanted to make sure everybody had seen, it would have come in through email from NISBA, is apparently there is a bill sitting on the governor's desk, which if it is signed, will require the school district to have at least one student representative on the board. So, just something to keep an eye on. There's, they're not sure in terms of an effective date, and obviously, it still requires a signature. But it did pass the Assembly and the Senate, so that's just something that we should keep an eye on. Anybody have, Bob?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate, first, the girls varsity lacrosse team for winning section two, the second year in a row. Fortunately, they lost, and I think the quarterfinals of the state tournament, so they're out. But I'll also congratulate the boys varsity baseball, who won section two for the first time, I think, in 26 years. Won last weekend against West Virginia and continue to play in the state tournament this weekend, so good luck to them, and go get them.
One other bill of note, if I may, that's on the governor's desk, is one that would give school boards a seat on local IDAs. And so, we would have, if that gets signed, we would have a representative on the IDA as well.
Okay.
I just wanted to, I know, Jody, you asked if we had questions about the special ed program, to send them to you ahead of the next board meeting. I don't know if, what you're envisioning for that, about how do you use those questions, if you're thinking about doing, asking Jen to do a special ed presentation again or something. I just, I don't know if that would be helpful to frame the questions. I know that we've had, I'll speak for myself, but I have had an increase in outreach from parents recently concerned about changes in the program. We know we're about to have some leadership changes in the program, and we changed the assignment of aides, and I think I also learned after the special ed presentation to the board that there is no longer certain skills classrooms that there once were, and I don't think that the board was made aware of that. So, I don't know if another presentation would be helpful for folks. I have some concern, and I've said this before, that with me leaving the board, I've tended for the last six years to be the board member that asks a lot of questions about the program. And so, I don't know what the sort of depth of understanding is on the board, and I don't know if you guys think a presentation would be helpful to sort of level set, but I'm not sure with asking us to send questions, what it is that you were hoping to...
I mean, I was planning, depending on what the questions were, I was planning to respond to those questions. I mean, we had the presentation for the budget, and then Student Support Services kind of did an overview at our last meeting, but if we need to do a couple slides to clarify things, we can certainly do that.
So, see what the questions are, maybe that'll help you figure out how to frame it.
If that's okay.
That, I mean, that'll be my last meeting, right? So, I'm, I want to set these guys up to be able to monitor the right sort of things. So, I don't know if you guys have other thoughts. I can certainly send you sort of the trends of things that I've been hearing concerns about, and then a couple of questions that I had. And at the last meeting, I had suggested to Sarah that we re, try to relaunch the parent advisory committee. I think that there's been a lot of interest in that, and that might be worthwhile. I know that it's not the district's fault that it stopped last time. I think we just had people not showing up anymore, but it seems like we're in a period of time right now where it would be worth trying to structure that again.
Okay. Next is student reports. Do we have anybody here from the High School Student Senate? I'm guessing no. It would be unusual in June. And likewise, for middle school.
Do we, is the middle school going to start coming back again? It's been so long.
I think we will, encouraging them to fall.
We will encourage it.
I have a child on student council in middle school, and they don't ever talk about it, like, it's...
I think that's students' meeting with Mike to wrap up. I can see if we can get that going.
Next, item four, recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who'd like to address the board on an agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. If you could please state your name.
My name is Stephanie Smith, and I'm addressing the board with a transportation issue for my daughter. We are McKinney-Vento family, and there's concerns with a gentleman questioning my daughter in regards to her age, her name, where she goes to school. And it was brought to Albany Police Department's attention. There was a suspicious incident report filed. The district has failed to accommodate my daughter's change of transportation, so I've had to accommodate a sitter and pay out of pocket to protect my daughter. A couple people were involved, not many responded. The superintendent, the director of transportation, the chief business financial officer reached out to me. They're saying it's resolved. I don't feel that it is resolved. Being McKinney-Vento, it should have never been a fight to begin with. I feel, I used to be an employee with the district, and I feel that it's retaliation because I left kind of on it. because I left kind of on a, not a bad term for my resignation, but there was pretty unprofessionalism from the director. So I feel that there's retaliation. I feel they're not protecting my daughter, they're putting her and keeping her in harm's way, and I'm not okay with that. My daughter has a past history of sexual abuse, the district is aware, and they're not accommodating the stop. She currently walks from the corner of Hampton Street and Second Avenue, and has to walk past this house, and there's two other sex offenders on the street. I do know the board policy of a parent, or the transportation department, putting the child to a stop, and the parent is then responsible for getting that child from the stop. However, the adult that's home for my daughter is home with an autistic child who is a flight risk, and there's no transportation for him to go to the corner to get my daughter. So I'm just looking for a resolution in some way, shape, or form. I now am in contract with a sitter that's costing me $600 for the rest of the year. Some sort of payment for the inconvenience of the district putting my daughter in harm's way, or allowing my daughter to stay in harm's way. There's no DOT regulations on my street, except for a bus over 10,000 pounds or a vehicle over 10,000 pounds cannot park on that street. Other districts have been on that road. It is a one-way street, it can be congested. The district has other opportunities and means to accommodate the change with a smaller vehicle. There is a suburban already at Eagle Elementary. Like I said, I used to be a bus driver, so I know what they have accommodations for. So I'm just looking for some kind of resolution in regards to that, knowing the past history of my daughter and her being sexually abused. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda, item five, action items. A, our 2024 tenure appointments. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel, action items one through 15. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B? Finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action item number one.
So, why not all twenty?
Hmm? Because we're on, I'm looking at finance action items.
Oh, B, sorry.
Let me see, one.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel, action items one through 20. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to, I know we have trouble every year finding staff for the ESY and other summer programs, and there's a bunch of people who've stepped up again, so I just want to express my appreciation for those staff, both in the professional personnel action items and the support.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through five. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. E, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items one and two. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
On the resolution, action item two. Sorry, I'm just making sure I'm on the right page. Right?
Yep, it's number two.
I just want to say that a similar resolution to adopt June as Pride Month was approved by Albany County and by the town of Bethlehem, not just to acknowledge June as Pride Month, but also to formally recognize Bethlehem's first annual Pride Festival on June 22nd. The committee to put that together has done a ton of work in their free time to pull that event together, and I think it's gonna be really nice. We've got a lot of volunteers from both the middle school and high school participating as well, and I appreciate you guys considering the resolution.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item six, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone.
That's a bigger step than I expected, sorry. Amy Bloom, a mom of three kids with special needs in the district, and my guys are getting to the point where they're graduating a year from now, which is great. But we've got a lot of incoming kindergarten families, first, second grade families, who are definitely expressing a lot of concerns. Parents don't always know what they don't know, I think is probably the best way to put it. And so right now, you know, there's different Facebook groups for everything, obviously, and there's, you know, Facebook commentary that parents are really concerned about what's happening at Bethlehem and why the changes are being made. And so I think to kind of echo what Willow is saying, I think, I was able to speak to someone in the district today, and I found out, like, there's actually some really good reason why some of the changes are being made. And so that was really nice to hear. The kindergarten skills class is being changed a little bit into two co-taught programs with an extremely high level of support of teachers. And that's fantastic. It's a teacher full day and two aides in each classroom full day. And I'm currently a special ed teacher up in Clifton Park, and I've been meeting with lots of the different school districts up there, and no one is offering anywhere near that level of support for our kids. So it would be amazing to hear, like, Bethlehem patting itself on the back for really doing a great job, instead of seeing the kindergarten families really very, very anxious and concerned. And I think we would put minds at ease and actually help kind of build support for the Bethlehem Special Ed Department. And the other thing that I heard, which I was also very, like, proud to hear, was that this was done because there's been some data track that showed that the kids in the skills program weren't getting out of the skills programs. And so my knowledge base comes from my oldest, who's 22, where we had a lot of friends. We made kindergarten, first grade in the skills programs, and then they all got out, you know, and so my son stayed in, and then my other kids, you know, did their trajectory. So again, like, wow, fantastic to find out that there's a reason that changes are being made, and actually it's for a really good reason. And so instead of hearing the panic of, like, there's no skills class, what are we gonna do? And every parent kind of, that I'm in touch with, you know, reaching out and like, trying to figure out, what are they gonna strategize and that. Share this great news, because this is great news. You know, I think the next piece of the puzzle is parents are wondering, what happens as my kid gets a little bit older? And I do have that same question, you know, kindergarten is a more play-based program, and the opportunity is there to let the children play. And I'm teaching right now a co-taught class of 18, four-year-olds. You know, and I don't know, four-year-olds and kindergartners are somewhat similar. So kindergartners are kind of forgiving of their child who might be having an anxiety issue off in the corner, or who may not have yet learned to, like, keep their hands to themselves and dealing with some different diagnoses. But come first or second grade, it does get more challenging. There is a bigger divide, especially with our high achievers in Bethlehem, and some children who've got some real intellectual disabilities in Bethlehem. And so I think the more we can let information be shared, what will happen with the one-two skills class and the three-five skills class, and then the intensive skills classes, would help. So, and I just, when things are going great, it's great to hear it, you know, and it's great to hear the reasons why. And I do think, I appreciated very much, Robert, that you gave a shout-out to different sports teams. The other thing that maybe isn't well-known is that our unified sports team, which is an incredible program, again, at Bethlehem. So it's a sports team made up of kids with special needs as well as their typical peers in high school. And so we played all over the capital district this year, and everywhere else had an adult coach, everywhere. Everywhere we played, there was an adult coach. In Bethlehem, four high school females ran that team. And Mr. Mooney allowed them to run that team, and we came in second, after a double overtime, last 1.5-second shot from Niskuna. That's amazing, you know, and so that was also huge to see, that these guys who were up against real-life basketball coaches who teach other, coach other programs, were almost beat by four high school girls, you know? So Mr. Mooney did a really nice job out with that, too. So just to kind of also jump on that bandwagon. You know, I think that there is concern for sure about what's happening with our intensive skills program. You know, our fourth graders are now finishing in elementary school, and then the fifth graders are going to the middle school. And that is concerning, because our gen ed fifth graders are not at the middle school for good reason. They're not ready for middle school. This is a very small population for good reason as well, thankfully. We don't have a lot of kids in the intensive skills programs. But then we're taking our most challenged students, putting them in a program space that they're not developmentally at all ready for, and then they're being guided by our middle school principals, who are not aware necessarily of what a fifth grader can or can't do, especially not a fifth grader with disabilities. So kind of keeping things above board, and then ensuring that we're tracking our students who are now no longer able to go to a skills class being sent out of district, because that is always the two sides of the coin. We make a less restrictive program with the co-taught, but there are still students who need a skills program, and now we don't have it. So are the kids gonna then go to places like Bosie's, and is that what's optimal for our students? So just share the good news, Jody, because like, some great things are happening, and making sure we give the shout-outs that are happening, because that was fantastic to find out today. But then also asking, with Willow stepping away from the board, that people kind of dig deep to special ed, because it's a very small group of people. We don't all know each other, because our kids are in little tiny groups. And I think Willow's played an important part on this committee, so thank you so much on this board. Thanks, Willow.
Thank you.
My daughter is in third grade, and Amy pointed out some really good things, but there's also a flip side to that, too. When you put kids in the co-taught classes who aren't ready for it, and then, I don't know if you guys are asking enough questions about what's gonna happen when they need more help. Like, right now, it's really great how it's set up, but not all kids can handle that speed of learning, and they need it slowed down to them. And they also have days that they aren't doing so great, and I think that sometimes, you know, kids with a higher level of learning, they don't always understand, but they might, you know, kind of egg it on, and our kids need somewhere to go to, you know, de-stress, and it's really hard. So I think that's just one thing to think about with, you know, trying to do just like co-taught, and letting the parents know about the changes, because we don't know, and it leads to a lot of anxiety, not just for us, but for our kids, because, you know, they want to know where they're gonna be. You guys put kids, you know, one elementary school for two years, and another elementary school for two years, and that's not right, because they need to be in a safe environment where it's predictable, they know what's going on, but to try and get them comfortable, it is really hard when, you know, they think they're gonna leave after two years. And I don't think you guys would do that to any gen ed kids, but you seem to make a lot of changes for our kids, which is really unfortunate, because they can thrive and they can, you know, be at number one, just like gen ed kids can, but they're not really always given the chance. And it's really just, it's frustrating, because, you know, we're all the number one school district, but in special ed, we aren't. There's a number of parents that come up to me or ask me, you know, they thought they're moving into a great school district, and then, you know, they got into the special ed department, and it's not great. We shouldn't have to fight for our kids to get the same level of education as any other student. And I do love the district, you know, because I wouldn't donate a bench to you guys if I didn't, but we need changes in the special ed department, because our kids are getting kind of left behind, and they shouldn't. And they're great, they're great kids, and it's just, it's very frustrating for parents. And same with, there's just, there's a mountain of issues that is on the special ed, and somebody could just, like, actually just look into it, get back to parents, because we are constantly just struggling, and it feels like at times, there is nobody on our side from the district, and it's really frustrating, because, you know, pay 10,000 in school taxes, and I'm glad that, you know, the football field gets redone, I'm glad that the sports fields get due. But we also need to focus on the kids in special ed, because they deserve just as much chances as anyone else. That's it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
For a sister duo, so, she's my support sister. My name's Emily Field. I have three kids in the district, and I'm here tonight on behalf of my daughter Addie. She's my middle child, and she's not one of the high achievers in the district that we focus on. And it's, you know, Amy and Amanda said a lot of good points. I'm here as a parent, I'm here as a sister, I'm here as a friend, and I'm here as an advocate, not only for Addie, but for every child like Addie and every parent who won't come to a board meeting and won't speak up. She's in the skills class at Elsmere. That class was cut down two years ago from a K to two and three to five. Now it's a K to four. If you can think about gen ed students, a kindergarten and a fourth grader are quite different educationally. So putting these kids in one classroom, it's not a good fit. It's not working, it's not setting those kids up for success. I also don't think it's setting the teachers up for success. I've talked to teachers in the district, and, you know, we're focusing on co-taught and inclusion, and that is great for some kids, but not every kid can be in a co-taught classroom. I know my daughter can't, you know, maybe one day she will be, but right now, she can't. But right now, if there was a three-to-five class, maybe my daughter could stay in the district, but there's not a chance for her to stay here, because the program they want to fit my daughter in isn't, isn't working. And that's unfortunate. So I'm here for her, I'm also here for some kindergarten parents I've talked to, who, you know, their children would benefit from a K1 skills class. They're getting thrown into co-taught. And I, my question, I guess, for the board and for Jody, is have we talked to teachers? Because I know there's a lot of teachers out there that are in these co-taught classrooms that are not happy. These kids are not successful. Some kids are, and some kids aren't. It would be great if, you know, we could survey teachers and get their honest feedback of how it's working. You know, I know there's great ideas and good push for co-taught classrooms, but I just, I don't think it's the right fit for every student, and I really think that needs to be evaluated in the future. I think getting rid of the K1 skills class at Hammergrill, I think it's a mistake. I think getting rid of the class at Elsmere was a mistake. You know, we can't predict the future, we can't predict the kids that are gonna move into our district. It would be nice to have programs that have options for all students, not just the high achievers. And I think we really pride ourselves in Bethlehem in being the number one district, but as a couple of parents said, we are not number one for special ed. It's disappointing. I don't feel like it's a team, and, you know, my child matters just as much as every other child, just as much as my sixth grader, who is a high achiever, just as much as my second grader. We all deserve a chance. I grew up here, I have siblings who live here, and, you know, my child has several cousins. They all get everything they deserve, and I- They all get everything they deserve and I feel that my child with a disability doesn't and it's unfortunate and I would really like to see changes made and I just hope that we can think about the kids that, you know, need more help. And starting with kindergarten, that's their entry into the district. Let's set them up for success. Let's give them as much support as they need in kindergarten. And then maybe by second grade, they're out of a co-taught. You could talk to parents, the kids that's, kids are in eighth, ninth, 10th grade, maybe they're out of co-taught now and they're in gen ed and that's great. That's what we strive for. I think that's what the special ed model is, but, you know, we really, we need to start young. We need to start with those kids that are first entering the district and we need to not give up on kids who have challenging behaviors. I know, you know, there's, there's different reasons, but we can also be creative and we can think outside of the box and we can do better for that population because my child deserves that too. And, you know, that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else? You look like you were getting ready to get up.
I was like, should I, should, hi. My name is Eileen Nizer. I have a sixth grader at the middle school and I have a fourth grader at Hammergrill. I am really happy to hear that there's finally going to be a co-taught kindergarten with that level of support. I wish this would have been there for my son. So it's hard as a parent, especially as a special needs parent, to exist in a, in a school district when sometimes we feel invisible. It's hard to watch our kids struggle after years of being bounced from classroom to classroom and not be able to make friends because they are moved so much. And having a typical child, I see what that experience could be. And I'm sure many parents here could speak to that and it isn't. And I mourn for my son having missed those opportunities, but now knowing that there are more kids coming into the district that will have the opportunities my son didn't, that makes me feel very good. I really hope that the parent advisory committee comes back. I think it is so helpful and encouraging for parents to know they're not alone because I feel very much that the special needs parents, sometimes we all feel invisible with our kids. And to have a place where we could come together and brainstorm and show some unity and support to each other and also be able to come to a board meeting and be able to, to share like what we feel is working, what we feel isn't working. Like we had talked about at the last meeting, the transition for special needs kids from, from elementary school to the middle school is a lot. It was, it was in many ways like the level of communication wasn't there for us and we, we all kind of, kind of clung together and found each other because we, at least for, for me, I find that, you know, we have to do the communicating, we do a fair amount of the advocating and I'm not here to, to not like, I'm not here to just talk about the negatives. I, I do want to recognize that my son has had the best teachers at Hammergrill specially, the best support staff. And it's, those, those things make me feel really great about the district and, but there's also the fact that, you know, he suffers and he struggles emotionally and socially because there, there weren't these programs in place before and I don't want to see that happen to kids that are coming up behind him. So I, I feel now like I really hope that the kids that are coming up behind him have those supports. I really hope that the programs that are going to be created are, are successful and I think they will be from what Amy is telling me. But I also, my heart breaks for parents of kids that have intensive needs and now they're being sent out of district. And I, that has not been my experience, but my, my heart breaks for them and I think their, their voices should be heard. My son now is in a co-taught classroom and he does have incredible supports at the district at the middle school level. It's been a bumpy ride, but I think knowledge is really power for the special ed parents and many of them don't know about these meetings. Many of them are so wrapped up in the, 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 taking care of their kids and parenting that maybe they're just not made aware and I really hope that, you know, that, that parental advisory committee can come back. I would be happy to volunteer. I'll bring the donuts. And I think it would be really helpful for us to be able to find each other and have more of a voice because if, if one kid could feel seen, if one kid could feel more visible and included, and included, I, that would be a really good thing and let's just hope it happens for more. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, item seven, future meetings and events. On Tuesday, June 25th, here at the high school is the eighth grade moving up ceremony. And it officially starts at nine, but if you are attending, you should be here at least by eight forty-five because the kids start coming in. And then our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Wednesday, June 26th, anticipating executive session at six and we convene to open session at seven. And then on Thursday, June 27th, at the MVP Arena at three o'clock is the class of 2024's graduation. And also June 26th is the pancake breakfast, anyone who wants to come. On June 26th? Okay. Do you know what time that is? Seven thirty. Seven thirty? But you can come early and cook if you want to. Or just come at seven thirty and serve. Pet to. Okay. We do need to go back into executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation. Could I have a motion to do so? So moved.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That carries. Take students, so we're, we are, you are done. Come on up, sign out and you can go home.